And at this time of the Fourth of July, we wish to express unto thee that we love America and we love Independence. And we ask thee to bless our leaders in government, that they might establish a government of the people, by the people, and for the people, and that we, as citizens, might assist them and support them in these efforts. And Father in Heaven, we ask thee to bless our military. It is our soldiers and not the reporters that give us the freedom of press. It is the soldiers and not the poets who give us the freedom of speech. It is the soldiers and not the campus organizers that give us the freedom to protest. Our soldiers salute the flag, serve beneath the flag, and it's their coffins who are draped by the flag. We ask thee to bless them and protect them. We are grateful for our council members, for Mayor Weir and each one of the council members, who work very hard and diligently to do the things that are necessary, that make Independence such a wonderful place to live, and we ask thee to bless them and guide them and inspire them. We say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Saucy Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmembers Huff?
Here.
Perkins?
Here.
Dougherty?
Here.
DeLucie?
Here.
Roberson?
Van Camp?
Here.
Mayor Weir?
Here.
We have a presentation resolution this evening recognizing Holly Allerson, permits and zoning technician in the Community Development Department, as the Employee of the Month for July 2018. Madam Saucy Clerk.
Whereas the City Employee Recognition Program recognizes outstanding performance by employees of the City of Independence, and whereas an employee committee selects the employee of the month for exhibiting the qualities and ideals that best represent public service, and whereas the Employee Recognition Committee has selected Holly Allerson, permits and zoning technician in the Community Development Department, as employee of the month for July 2018. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Independence, Missouri, as follows, that the City Council of the City of Independence, Missouri, joins in recognizing Holly Allerson as a City of Independence employee for the month of July 2018.
Okay, entertain a motion for approval of the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Dougherty?
Yes.
DeLucie?
Yes.
Van Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes.
Holly Allerson has been with the City of Independence for almost five years. She started in the Water Department and now works as a permit and zoning technician in the Community Development Department. Holly says she enjoys working with the community and the contractors, and working at the front counter of City Hall always brings new things and helps keep her informed about what is happening in the city. Holly says that she tries to be helpful and patient with citizens as they don't always understand the inner workings of the city functions. So taking time to help them can give them a better outlook on the city they live in rather than leaving in frustration. Outside of work, Holly is a band mom, which can consume a lot of time, and sometimes that is really important to her daughter, that she participates. Holly says her favorite office nickname is Hollywood, and when asked if a real Hollywood movie were to be made about her, who she would like to see cast, she says Amy Fuller. Holly says if she could witness any historical event, it would have been the day women finally received the right to vote. Please join me in recognizing Holly Allerson as the July 2018 Employee of the Month. Okay, our first proclamation this evening is for Stand Up for Stanley. Madam Saucy Clerk.
Whereas Stanley is a three-year-old English bulldog born with a bilateral cleft lip, a birth defect that is uncommon but does exist in large and small breeds regardless of pedigree, and whereas animals born with clefs are generally euthanized without any records of births or deaths, Stanley tries to save lives by showing that animals with birth defects can be an asset to the families, the community, and most importantly, to children. And whereas Stanley has become the ambassador to the smile train and is helping children in different countries born with cleft lips and palates receive free surgeries as they themselves are often shunned, bullied, and even destroyed. And whereas Stanley was born with a curved spine and deformities in his back legs, Stanley uses these challenges as tools to teach children about differences in hopes to stop bullying and suicide among our youth by showing that it is okay to be different. And whereas Stanley shows no judgment nor opinion, Stanley has established a bond with the homeless, the elderly, the disabled, and the veterans, giving each the understanding needed as they so desire to be accepted for who they are. And whereas Stanley has partnered with American Childhood Cancer Organization to become the first founding hope chapter for the state of Missouri, as he founded P.S., One More Thought, the nonprofit group that helps children with cancer both locally and across the state. And whereas Stanley teaches us all that we are all different, we are unique, and through our uniqueness, we bring gifts and talents that add beauty to our world and hope for a better tomorrow. Now therefore, Eileen and Weir, Mayor of the City of Independence, Missouri, by the virtue of authority vested in her by the City of Independence, Missouri, does hereby proclaim July 2nd, 2018, as Stand Up for Stanley Day in Independence, and encourages citizens to understand that differences should be embraced, not judged.
Okay, thank you. Would you like to bring Stanley up so everybody can see him and his humans? Thank you. Debbie? Okay. Debbie, Ronnie, Lisa, and Lucy, and Stanley. Here's your resolutions. Thank you very much. Debbie, would you, I'd like to just give you a minute. I know you've been receiving proclamations a lot in the local area and have a goal to ultimately receive a proclamation from the United States Senate and the United States Congress, so can you maybe talk a little bit about your efforts? If you want, use the microphone, you may.
Our goal, not only to help children understand about difference and help others that feel like they don't have a purpose or a plan or that they don't fit into our society, we are trying to get acceptance to the White House. We have a local state in a congressional proclamation passed through Stand Up for Stanley. We have two letters from Senators, both Claire McCaskill and Senator Blunt. We write now, thanks to the mayor, have thirty-nine proclamations passed from town to town. We're traveling from town to town through the state of Missouri as we're trying to show the White House how important this is. It's not about a dog, it's about those who represent. So we're working with Congressman Graves right now, and we're trying to get the President to sign Stanley a proclamation through the White House, and that's our goal. And if we get that, acceptance of overcome judgment, and that's what we're looking for.
Thank you very much. Good luck. Okay, our, our next, our next proclamation is for Parks and Recreation Month. Madam Saucy Clerk.
Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Independence, Missouri, and whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of citizens. And whereas studies have shown that parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, increased tourism, and the attraction and retention of businesses, and whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community as they can improve water quality, protect groundwater, decrease flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and enhance the ecological beauty of our community, and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas Independence, Missouri recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Now therefore, Eileen and Weir, Mayor of the City of Independence, Missouri, does hereby proclaim the month of July 2018 as Parks and Recreation Month in Independence, Missouri, and encourages citizens and government officials to observe this month by engaging in recreation programs and activities offered by the Independence Parks Recreation Tourism Department, and enjoy all the ways parks and recreation can improve quality of life, including family programs, senior programs, health and wellness opportunities, community celebrations, outdoor education, and more.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, this takes us to the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I would move to approve the recommendations and reports of the City Manager.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any items any council member wishes pushed for separate, hold for separate consideration? Councilman Dougherty.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull number two, number four, and this should also be resolutions, right?
Yes.
Eighteen dash seven sixty-five.
Okay, any others? Okay, please call the roll on the consent agenda for minus items number two, item number four, and resolution eighteen seven sixty-five.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Dougherty?
Yes.
DeLucie?
Yes.
Van Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Councilman Dougherty, item number two.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I'd like to ask the City Manager a little explanation on number two. Is that something that we're going to hire yearly and pay a yearly fee for, or is this something we're only going to use as we need it? Can you look, little explanation on what that contract is for those financial services?
Sure, council member. The recommendation is to enter into a contract with Springstead Incorporated to be our financial advisor. This is an annual contract with an option for up to four one-year renewals. Essentially how this contract works is that Springstead would be on call to us when we need them for assistance with financial services. Typically, what a financial advisor does is assist you with debt issuances, so anytime that we have a bond issue, either for a special revenue or for one of our utilities, they would assist with marketing that and doing that in a neutral way. They would be an independent advisor to us, separate from any of the underwriters, so it's really important to have them to give that neutral third-party advice. The way they are compensated, they receive a fee through the debt issuance, it's part of the closing cost, so we don't have a set fixed fee with them on an annual basis, they only get paid in the instance that we use them for debt financing. Under this agreement, we also will utilize them on an as-needed basis for economic development services. If we're negotiating an agreement with a major developer or a major project, and we want to ask for their services to do, again, an independent financial analysis or help us look at a cost-benefit analysis related to an incentive package, but again, those would all be scope and fee priced, and we would use them on an as-needed basis.
So we don't have a yearly fee we're going to pay them then, like a retainer?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. Madam Mayor, I move for the approval of number two.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Dougherty?
Yes.
DeLucie?
Yes.
Van Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Item number two passes. Councilman Dougherty, item number four.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One of the things that we, as a council, instructed the City Manager to do is find ways that we could save money on different services or things we do here at the city. Would it be cheaper to sub them out? Would it be cheaper to eliminate them? Would it be cheaper to combine them? And one of the things we looked at was our in-house copy and print services. There was once, I believe, the City Manager, what, four employees in that service before? So we put out an RFP to see if we could do it cheaper, and it's my understanding that really the prices all came back somewhat higher than we'd expected, and this was one of the things that we, we were actually doing fairly reasonably. They then pared down that department of four to one person, and then they would sub this out. But by doing the math, it looks like if they add back one more employee that would have lost their job, we're basically at a push on costs. Okay? So we're really not gaining much. And then I looked on the back of your packet, the very last page on the back, and I looked at the prices here, and the Avacorp was seventy-four dollars and eighty-three cents, the control printing was forty-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents, the copy printer recommended was the highest at eighty-seven fifty, and Maywood that we've used before was thirty-eight eighty-three. So I said, "Well, why did you pick the highest one?" And they said, "Well, we then let that person negotiate down to a lower price." Okay, I'm good with getting the low price. I said, "Did you let the other people negotiate down?" I was told, "No." Is that correct, City Manager?
Yeah, thank you, council member. Just for a quick clarification, I think the numbers that you were citing are the average scores. The pricing was listed on the line just below that, so corporate copy print that's recommended.
I see, eighty-six. All right, I was looking at the composite score, so they had a higher score. Okay, so it was eighty-six, one oh four, and sixty-two. So sixty-two was cheaper.
Correct, and one of the four bidders was non-responsive on our pricing request, so we had a hard time determining what their price was.
I get it. So he still had a cheaper one, sixty-two forty-one?
Correct.
Okay, there you go.
This was a request for proposals process where we look at qualifications. So pricing was one factor that we considered among a number of other customer service-based qualifications that we looked at, but you're right. On the whole, the pricing for this service came back quite a bit higher than we had anticipated when we were initially evaluating this option of outsourcing this service. We still feel like we've put together a proposal, kind of a hybrid proposal, where we would keep that utility billing in-house and outsource other services, but the savings are not quite as significant as what we had hoped for.
Yeah, we kind of thought we'd see something that'd really startle us, but it really wasn't. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to make a motion that we go ahead and add back the job we cut. So instead of four people in that department, you'll have two, and we just remain at the status quo, we not enter into this contract at this time and see how, and just see how it goes. Now, I, correct me if I'm wrong, at any given time, can we revisit this?
Of course.
In case we, in case it doesn't work out, or, I'd rather, I'd rather see somebody go back, now I know this is a quick turnaround from last week, but I'd like to see somebody gain their job back on this one, if we're really not saving a tremendous amount of money, keep it in-house, and then just look and see how it goes, and then reevaluate it later. So my motion is, well, it's not a motion, it's up for a vote here, I'm not going to support it because I want to go back to what you did, and then however you make this work, if it's, my understanding, you would add probably one more person back, so you've saved fifty percent in there, so that's, really that's what we want you to do anyways, find ways to save money, so you did, and that was our intent anyway. So I'm not going to support that. Also, we have a, we had the fact that one person got an unfair advantage, I think, by getting to negotiate, and then there was a lower price already. So did the low guy get a chance to get lower? And the answer was no. So I question that a little bit. I want transparency and fairness in all of our bids, so I can question that a little bit. So I think I'm going to let this one go for now, and we'll reevaluate it later. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
I'm confused. Is there a motion?
No, there isn't. You just vote this up or vote this down, the way I see it.
Is there any further discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Should we possibly postpone this for two weeks to see if the personnel will give us, adding the additional personnel would give us the proper ability to do the work that's needed? I'm supportive, if we can add a job, then we should, but if we're not going to be able to do the work needed.
So my concern is that we haven't approved a budget that has certain positions funded in it, and, and, you know, these are personnel moves that are being suggested, which, you know, we, the City Manager has the ability throughout the year to make adjustments to personnel as needed to fulfill needs. I do believe that we headed down this pathway with the intent and the expectation that this was going to be a cost savings and efficiency savings, and it didn't really quite do what we anticipated it might do. I think overall, the savings is twenty-two thousand dollars over what it was, but I'm reluctant to support, you know, making a person, you know, suggesting that we're going to make a personnel change without further investigation. I would be in favor of potential, you know, postponing this or sending this back to staff to evaluate if, you know, this is really gaining us the type of savings that we feel is worthwhile at this juncture, so.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
I'll make the motion that we remand this back to city staff under the guise of looking at what Councilman Dougherty suggested.
Second.
I agree. I think that's a good compromise.
Yeah, it's been moved and seconded. The bids, I mean, it's interesting, I don't know that I've ever, can recall seeing ones where the lowest score was also the highest price, and so, as this is something new that we've never bid out before, I think it does bear maybe another look. Is there any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded to remand this back to staff or further recommendations. Madam Saucy Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Dougherty?
Yes.
DeLucie?
Yes.
Van Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Motion passes. Okay.
One more.
Next is Resolution eighteen seven sixty-five.
Sixty-three.
No, seventeen sixty-five.
Sixty-five.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, this is where it's our intent to adopt the 2017 National Electrical Code. This is a good thing, should have done a long time ago. We're on the 2011 code of all things, and they come out every three years, so we really do need to do it. And one of the, and I'll give you the reasons why in a little bit, but what I think we need to do is when we, and we will put this out for ninety days so the contractors are familiar with the changes, which are not that much, and then we would finalize it. But I would like to see three amendments put into there. And the first one's dealing with arc fault protectors. They're kind of like a GFI outlet that you have on your, on your house, and the old code says you just have to put them in bedrooms, which has been really good, it's been that way, but the new code wants it in every single room in a house. This would be very costly to somebody who is just doing a minor upgrade. Many cities are staying with just the bedrooms, which is the most important. I would like to see that as a modification to that, that it goes back to the old language. The second one is splices in our service entrance conductor, and that's the big wire that comes to the meter can to your breaker panel. What it is, the solar companies are coming in, they're cutting into that cable and splicing into it on this solar equipment. What this says is that they need to put a breaker in there so they can disconnect that source, and that's, that's real important. The last one is the, you only could go ten feet on your big cable before you need a disconnect on it, because before you could go a long way, so it needs to be ten feet. And I don't see, I don't see our electrical inspector out here, but he can explain that sometimes easier than I can, but the ten feet, they need a disconnect point. And this is very common to have this, have this requirement in the code. One of the reasons we need to go that new code is this has to, the updates, because really, you know, water still don't flow uphill, so electron flow is the same. This has to do with the solar industry, solar photovoltaic is what it is, this is solar. And this is for emergency responders. When there's a fire, the first thing to do is pull your light meter, turn off your lights. If this is daytime or if it's, the fire's bright enough, the solar panels still generate electricity, and this new code that we need to adopt addresses that, where there is a shutdown on that system automatically and disconnects, like we talked about earlier. So one of the real important things about getting this new code in is this deals with the solar industry that has now become very prevalent in our industry, again, since 2011, and it was very important for the rap, you know, rapid shutdown for emergency responders so they don't get electrocuted as a battle of fires. So I would like to ask that we put three amendments onto that 2017 code as we move towards the ratification of it ninety days.
Okay, so just let me make sure that I understand this clearly, what you're recommending and the amendments that you're making, which I didn't understand any of them.
I get it.
But, is that as we take this out for public comment for the ninety days?
Yes.
That we put these three things?
Yes.
Into it to receive public comment?
Yes.
So those who are very knowledgeable about the electric, the National Electric Code have the opportunity to advise if these, make comments on whether these things may be, since 2017, are updates, are further adjustments that could be made that would be suitable to our city.
Yes.
So you're not asking us to, to approve those amendments tonight, you're asking that those be included?
Yes.
So that's?
For comment, as they do over the ninety-day period for comment, those, we would, our intent would be to adopt the 2017 with the following changes, and they could be for comment during that ninety-day period. And if the comments all come back affirmative, then we would go ahead and add those in to when we make the final decision. Yes, exactly.
So there is a motion to include these amendments into the public comment period for the 2017 National Electric Code?
Yes, that's the motion I want to make.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion to amend?
I just have a question, and not really on the motion to amend, but I know nothing about electrical, but let's say someone out there has a really good idea, and during this ninety-day period, could that person bring that really good idea forward?
Yes.
Okay.
That'll be a public comment period on it, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
One last thing, maybe at one of the next meetings, like I said, I didn't see our electrical guy out here tonight, sometimes he's here, maybe we can have him come up, who's thirty-some-odd years into the industry, and can put it in better, better layman's, I understand it, but I can't articulate what I want there, but maybe he can come in and tell you what those mean, and then you could ask a question, and he could explain it better too.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
On these things, on this code, this really doesn't affect anybody other than first responders, it's to protect them, and that's why we have that code. And it should be renewed all the time, because it's, they have no protection right now with solar panels, none.
Thank you. Okay, yes, Councilman Van Camp?
What?
I know, I know.
Yeah. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. If there's no further discussion, would you please call the roll?
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Dougherty?
Yes.
DeLucie?
Yes.
Van Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. I do want to just make a comment, we were, the last time that we adopted the National Electric Code, which I, I think it was the 2011 code that we adopted in 2013?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
If memory serves me, we had no public comments. We made it known to many people in our community who had, contractors in particular, architects who, you know, have an interest in this. It's available through the City Clerk for people to come and, and look it over and offer comments, so I, this is important, and those who do have knowledge and understanding of these issues or are coming to the city and seeking permits and wanting to do construction in our city, I really encourage you to come and participate in that process. Okay, that takes us to, oh, we need a motion to approve, Councilman Dougherty, of the resolution with those amendments?
Yes, I move for, I move for approval, eighteen dash seven sixty-five with the amended, as amended.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Dougherty?
Yes.
DeLucie?
Yes.
Van Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. We have one non-ordinance action item. Madam Saucy Clerk?
Council action is requested to approve a contract with primetime contracting for the Nativity Sidewalks Phase Two Improvements Project, number seven zero one one zero eight
of $138,274, and authorizing administrative approval of change orders not to exceed $13,827.40 and/or time extensions.
Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Doorty?
Yes.
DeLucie?
Yes.
Van Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Ware?
Yes. Item passes. We have no second readings this evening, so Madam City Clerk, if you would please proceed with the first reading.
Bill number 18-056, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of the 2018 Midwest High-Intensity Drug Trafficking Area Memorandum of Understanding for the Investigative Support Center Initiative and related documents with the Kansas Bureau of Investigation for a grant award in the amount of $67,244, making the necessary appropriations, authorizing future change orders for additional funding and/or time extensions, and authorizing certain future appropriations. Bill number 18-057, an ordinance authorizing the congestion mitigation and air quality agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the Independence Operation Greenlight Traffic Controllers Project, number 70110704. Bill number 18-058, an ordinance amending Article 18 of Chapter 5 of the Independent City Code dissolving the license surcharge annual review committee and empowering the Street Improvement Oversight Committee to monitor the license surcharge and make recommendations annually to the city council. Bill number 18-059, an ordinance finding, determining, and declaring the necessity of acquiring general utility easements and temporary construction and grading easements for the Sugar Creek Neighborhood Stormwater Improvements Project, number 703, excuse me, 70131503, authorizing the negotiation and imminent domain proceedings if necessary, approving the plans and specifications for the project, authorizing the use of experts as needed, authorizing and directing the execution of documents and the payment of funds to property owners or others holding property rights in conjunction with the project.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to move amendment, bill number 1806, to include Articles 725, 50, and 60 of the National Code and definition on the low voltage wiring.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Would you like to try to explain this?
This is another one of these things. The reason why this is a good bill is that all the city contractors come in, everybody has to have a licensed roofing, electrical, and everything else. This is one that's left out. We have found through the police department and stuff that 50% of their false alarms are due to shabby work. And this is going to get qualified people in there putting these in there instead of just anybody. Also, we've kind of made it a responsibility for them to, of course, we're not going to know who put it in, so we'll be able to hold them accountable for this.
So, this is for installation of like home security systems?
Home security, businesses, actually, the fire alarms in these buildings and stuff like that.
Okay. Thank you. Are there, yes, Councilman Doorty?
One of the things that we look at is the big expansion out at the medical center and all the miles of voice and data and computer cable that's being done out there. And if that is a separate contract, that contractor doesn't buy a business license or electrical license or any type of licensing and can put that equipment in. So, this gives us the ability to know who's doing the work, knowing that their insurance requirements have been met. And if they're doing shoddy work, then we do have a recourse on, on these vendors. So, it doesn't just mean the ADT alarm in your house. It's voice, data, communication, wiring in, in the larger buildings that we do require any type of license for this type of work. So, it includes all that also.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember DeLucie?
I'm just, I really want a presentation on this because you guys are talking French to me.
Sure.
I read this, and I said, what, I have to get a permit to put in a doorbell?
No.
Is that what this is?
No.
But that's what?
Yes.
People who don't know what you're talking about are afraid of. So, I would, can we please have a presentation on this next time we meet?
That would be good.
Let's say session next week?
That would be terrific.
Maybe a little more in-depth?
Because I don't know what they're talking about.
Yeah. Between now and the second reading. That'd be great.
Thank you.
Yeah. Then you can give us all law degrees and, you know. Perkins, you can, you know, teach us all how to do some butchering and, you know.
I can show you how to cut the fat, Mayor.
Yeah, I see. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we don't have to take a, do we need to take a vote? Motion to amend? Okay, so if there's no further discussion, please call the roll on the motion to amend.
Councilmember Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Doorty?
Yes.
DeLucie?
Yes.
Van Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Ware?
Yes. Motion passes. Okay, this takes us to, excuse me, citizens' request to speak. Our first request is from Darla Lewis, wishes to speak to the council about a number of dogs at a residence. Ms. Lewis, if you would please come up, state your name for the record. You will have five minutes, and the city clerk will keep the time at the podium, let you know when you have one minute remaining.
I have some pictures I would also like to give you.
That's fine. I'll pass them around. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Darla Lewis, and I'm with Lewis Investments. My husband and I own the property at 9418 and 9420 East 13th Street South here in Independence. And we've owned it since 1997. I'm coming to the council, be, for the council, as I am a concerned citizen and a property owner. I recently went to make minor repairs at 9418 East 13th Street, only to be met at the fence with approximately 14 large barking dogs. Some had collars, some did not. These dogs continued to follow me up the length of my sidewalk to the front door of the duplex, barking the whole time. This fence is approximately 15 feet from where I was walking. I was concerned for my safety. I have had my tenants complain of barking noise. I was unaware of the number until I went over there. And I just recently lost a new tenant that was going to move in and became alarmed about the number of dogs. On first encountering the dogs, I did call the police department, not knowing who to contact first. He advised me to contact the animal control, and they advised me that they had been in contact with this person on several calls, and that they were aware of the situation. They had been to the property, and was told by the, the person that owned the property that she only had two or eight dogs maximum at any given time. Today's the first time I've seen only two. And she advised them that she was a licensed daycare. They have since found out she's not. I have called each time I have been to the property, as I was told to do, to find out what the current status of the situation was. Animal control has advised me that the neighbor is running an unlicensed doggy care, and it's my understanding that she has not filed or requested these licenses as of today. That person is now checking into also possibly having it re-zone so that she can be a licensed daycare or, I guess, licensed daycare, or, or run a business from that home. I want to know if this can be prevented, as I think it will cause, cause the value of our properties to go down. I was also advised about the, from the zoning, that, to call the zoning commission, which I did. He advised me to contact the mayor's office, which I did, and they advised me of tonight's meeting, and that's why I'm here.
Okay.
As you see from the pictures, that was taken on Saturday afternoon, and that was just part of the dogs.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Lewis, for coming this evening. This is a situation, I believe, that we are looking into. If it is, in fact, the situation that I, that I think that it is, and working with the property owner on a variety of different options. So, I just wanted to assure you that we are aware of the situation and the past, you know, practices, and we're, we're working to come to some resolution.
Should the health department be advised of the odor when it's hot like it has been?
We know about, I mean, our staff is well aware of the situation and has, we're involved with multiple departments.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Mark Velder, who wishes to speak to the council about putting up the Israeli flag in honor of Holocaust victims. Mr. Velder?
And in keeping with the new policy for inclusivism, I would like the council, the mayor, to make a proposal to put up an Israeli flag for the month of August. I'll supply the flag, and it's for the Holocaust victims, six million that were killed during World War II, and for the surviving, the aged surviving ones that are alive today. Myself, I have been to Dachau, I've been to Auschwitz and seen my, with my own eyes, these death camps. I've read anything you can put out there about the Holocaust, and I believe it would honor the Jews. Their flag is not about sex. It's about a people who have been killed, and you've got about 15 million Jews in the world today, and about 14 of them are going to lose their lives soon. And so, I'm asking to honor them. Also, Harry S. Truman, whose home is about a half a mile from here, his friend Eddie Jacobson and him, World War I buddies, they put together something, and in, at 6:11 PM, 1948, May 14th, he recognized Israel as a state. And I think it would also honor our president. And I understand, you know, now we're putting other flags up there, and if that's the case, if that's the case, then I would like to include this flag right here. So, I'll just give you a verse from the Bible that says, "I'll bless them that bless thee, and I'll curse them that curse thee." And I think independents could use a blessing. Amen? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Velder. Before we move on to council member comments, I've asked the city manager to please provide the council and the community with some updated information about our ongoing utility billing system. We continue to receive a number of calls from citizens who are still struggling to navigate the system and are experiencing some long wait times and concerns about not receiving their bill or, in some cases, inaccurate bills. So, I know this is something that we have been, been transitioning, and a few, I mean, certainly some bumps along the road are to be expected, but, you know, I would like to ask this city manager, if you would please provide us with an update on the status of the transition.
Thank you, Mayor. Council appreciates the opportunity to get some more information out. This is certainly an issue that we are very sensitive to, hearing from our customers, and working very hard every day to resolve those issues. I do just want to acknowledge our account information representatives and the other staff at the IUC, who are really very much working around the clock, lots of nights and weekends, to be responsive to our customers and, and doing the best that they can with the resources that they have. And we are making improvements. So, if you will indulge me, I, I have a list of questions that we've heard from some of you and that we've been getting frequently through social media that I'll try to just run through and provide some updates. Probably the most common question that we receive is around the late bill. Why haven't I received my bill yet? And we went live with the new system on May 22nd and had about a 12-day delay on the billing just because of accuracy issues and wanting to really verify that the bills that we were pushing out were accurate. At this point in time, all of our customers should have received at least one bill under the new billing cycle. About, about a third of our customers would have received two bills now under the new billing cycle. So, those bills are out there. If we still have customers who are saying they have not received any bills under the new billing cycle, that means that we do have an error. It's probably a situation where the address isn't entered correctly in our system, or maybe a partial address where we have an apartment number missing. So, we do need those customers to contact us, either through the customer service phone number 816-325-7930, or via email, utilitycustomer service@indepthmode.org. We know we're experiencing long wait times, some through the phone. I will say those wait times are getting better. I know that you all have heard examples anecdotally of 45 minutes to an hour on wait times. I think that was much earlier in our process. We are improving every week. Most recently, last week, we were having call times more in the neighborhood of 18 to 25 minutes. Still much higher than we would like to see, but I, I do think we are getting through that backlog of customer complaints. But we are certainly encouraging people, if you don't need an urgent answer right away, use that email account. We are setting a goal to try to respond to those emails within 24 hours. So, that's an alternative for our customers to not have to sit and wait on hold.
Can you repeat that email address one more time?
Of course. It's all one word, utilitycustomer service@indepthmode.org. We've had questions about bills being marked delinquent or just anxiety from customers that they'll be charged late fees because the bills are coming late. I want to assure everyone, we are not charging late fees or delinquent fees or doing water shut-offs for bills that are late under the new billing cycle. If a customer has a bill that's marked delinquent or has that late fee associated with it, those are delinquencies and fees that had already been incurred prior to the new billing system going into place. So, there are customers who haven't received that bill yet, that bill's coming late, they have no worry of, of getting a late payment associated with that. We've had lots of questions about the, the bills appearing to be higher than, than previous billing cycles. There may be a couple things contributing to that. In May through September of each year, we have peak pricing on, on electric utility. That's just based on demand in the warm summer months, and that pricing goes up, and that pricing structure has been in place for many years. So, if customers are getting that bill for May and for June and comparing it to what they had in March or April, that's likely because that new pricing has kicked in. We also had an abnormally warm May. Our electric usage in May was 24% higher than last year, so probably most of our customers just had higher electric usage this month. So, those are both probably the primary factors that are contributing to those higher bills that they're seeing. But there were no rate adjustments specifically related to the implementation of the utility billing system. Let's see. We have had questions about not receiving the city scene in an effort to really push those bills out. Sometimes we have a printing problem with inserting the city scene, and we did have examples this month of where those did not make it into the utility bills. So, if there are any customers who did not receive that city scene and want one, they can contact city offices, and we will make sure that one is mailed to them separately. It's also available electronically on our website, and we have copies available at all of our public facilities, City Hall, the Utility Center, as well as sites like the Palmer Center, the Sermon Center, Truman Memorial Building. Are there other questions, Mayor, or Council, that you've heard that?
One other that I've heard, I mean, the wait times are, are still long, and that's the biggest complaint and people are concerned, is the way the bill looks, that people are seeing pulled out a fuel charge and the 9.08% pilot. So, I don't, if you can just kind of talk to those about why it appears that there are new charges on the bill and just the way that the bill looks.
Yeah, thank you for that reminder. One of the reasons that we went to this new billing system is to increase transparency for our customers. These bills have a lot more information on them and, and a lot more user-friendly format than our customers are probably used to seeing in the past. So, yes, it's itemized on there now, a fuel charge. That fuel charge is assessed to us by our electric utility supplier, so we're just passing that cost on. And then the pilot charge for payment in lieu of taxes, it's 9.08%. Again, that hasn't changed from previous billings, but the information is presented in a little different format than what our customers are used to seeing, so that's generating some questions. But it's a good news, bad news. We're really trying to be more transparent and provide more information on these bills, and that's working because our customers are definitely noticing, and we're getting questions. But again, these aren't changes or new rates, it's just information that's being displayed in a little different format. And on our website, we do have a sample version of the bill that has call-out boxes and has a little more information about what each of the charges represent. So, if, that's a tool that customers can use if they have more questions about the billing.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, Congress?
Thank you. I've got one that's really simple. I've been, several people have called and said, well, they went out there in person to ask the question because they couldn't get anywhere on the phone. I get it. So, that has overwhelmed the waiting room and overwhelmed the amount of chairs and places for people to sit. And the complaint is, the place is packed full of people, and there becomes a little bit of dispute on who's next in line and who was there first. bit of dispute on who's next in line and who was there first. It's my recommendation, that as quickly as possible, we get someone out there, either hands you a number at the door, or a numbering system, so when you've been in line ahead of somebody else, somebody doesn't... I know this sounds bad, cut in front of your line... Cut in front, or cut in the line, or get in a different order. It's little disputes like this that can really get out of hand and get bad. So we need some way of controlling who's next in line at what window, and if we could look into that, that will take a little frustration out, that you know if 23 is up, and you've got 24, you're probably next, and it takes that dispute out. So I would like for you to look at that for me, please.
Appreciate that suggestion. We will look into that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to thank Tom and Dan. This is a big undertaking out there, and people really don't realize what this really... This thing is. I think they've done a real, real good job out there. Actually, my bill's cheaper, so I love it.
If we could get that numbering system here, too? Okay. This is absurd. Why is it that the bills weren't out there?
The issue's related to importing data from our old system. I mean, our old system is decades old, and when you're trying to convert that volume of information into a new system, it's impossible to have a totally clean conversion, so...
So we're going to a new system? Because I've had constituents be no more informed after they talked to them than before. They didn't even know that there was a new system. They still thought it was just their bill. They're not only not calling them or getting them on time, there's been up to eight hours on the phone, six to eight hours. Maybe I'm exaggerating. Six hours, I know from one person. Why anybody would stay on the phone that long, I have no idea. But they did. And they still thought it was just their bill. I don't think we've knocked down the information here into a condensed form to tell them what it is. We're putting out a new bill, we're interfacing with new software?
Yes.
Okay. Well, somebody's got to get an explanation that works over the phone, because it's not going out.
Okay. Appreciate that feedback. Will endeavor to do better.
Yeah, I mean, our goal certainly, I mean, as we've stated, is customer service, and this has been a challenge, there's no question about it. And I think we did have some difficulty in communicating the proper information, so we need to make sure that that is clear. And thank you for helping us, because it's not just our customer service representatives who are taking those calls, it's the mayor's office, the city manager's office, the city council's office, and I'm sure every button that anybody can push to try to get a live human being, they are pushing. So, you know, this council made a commitment that our employees, we might be cross-trained as much as possible, we don't expect people to be experts on every topic, but we, you know, people are, you know, reaching the point of beyond frustration, so, you know, let's continue to make sure that our staff is articulate, to be able to answer basic questions for, you know, our customers as we continue to work through this. So, thank you. I know it's been taxing on every one of our staff people, as... And certainly, you know, to answer these questions, and hopefully we are turning the corner and on our way to smooth sailing with this new system, which really is a great, great improvement over our old system. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Then I will start on my right with Councilmember Doherty. Councilmember Doherty?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. One of the things that Councilman Roberson, and he's not here tonight, and I had discussion a couple weeks ago, is when we had rejected the AMI proposal from the vendor that was recommended by the PUAB, he said he didn't want to revisit it for a while. But after rethinking that, he realized that one of the keys to keeping our rates low, our utility rates, is to be as efficient as possible. And we heard that again with former council member Jason White last week, that we're missing an opportunity to save well over $2 million a year with electronic metering. One of the things he said that we didn't get to do last time, and I agree with him, is there were five vendors that they deemed responsive. We never got to hear what the other ones were going to present. We really never got to hear what the equipment was on the one that we were going to recommend. They just said, "This is a price, and this is what it's going to take." They never came in and showed us the meter, and told us how it worked, and how many times it signaled, and the signal strength, and how it would go on your house, and that type of things. So one of the things I think we would like to do, and I'd like to direct the city manager to schedule, as soon as we can get everybody's schedule together, council presentations of the AMI vendors. The ones that were deemed responsive vendors, I believe there were five of them, that they scored... They scored them zero to 100, and I think 80% and up was the five they said were responsible. And have those vendors come in here to us, and show us their equipment. Tell us, what does it do? How's it look on your house? Does it generate heat? Does it generate radiation? How many times does it generate a signal? What does it really do? What their proposals were? Did they have an opt-out? Did they have a financing? Did it take five years to put in, or a year to put in? And what we should also do is, in fairness, is maybe just limit the presentation time. And you guys can figure out what you think is fair. So we don't go two hours times five people, nor five minutes. So a fair time to give a fair presentation of what their equipment does. And then we have a fair time that we can... Council members can ask a question, if we have a question on the equipment. You know, how many times does it read? Does it read very fast? Does it collect other information? And these were the questions that did not get sufficiently answered, that seemed to gin up a lot of comment, and public people coming up to council asking questions that we really never got the answers to, and it's questions we all wanted to hear. So the vendors would have a chance to present their systems, highlight the features of their individual systems, limit how long they could talk, so one person doesn't monopolize the evening, maybe even start 30 minutes, 40 minutes earlier to get it done, and then have a reasonable time that the council members could ask a question on the equipment. So I'd like to see if that could be done.
I would suggest, however, that...
This is... I would suggest also that the PUAB get a presentation.
Yeah, they... I think they should come and see it, too.
Right.
Yeah.
But if they have questions, I mean...
Sure. And eliminate, so we don't have one person to once one vendor with other, ask two hours worth of questions, type of deal.
Right.
Now, I got a two-part... Two-part deal tonight. That's number one. Number two, I've had some people say, you know, one of the goals of our council is to be more customer-friendly. They're coming in to pay court fines and court fees, and finding the window closed. They close up during lunch, you can't get in and pay your... You know, people run in to pay their fine, pay their fee, and probably not in a good mood to do it anyway, and then they get there and find the window closed, because everybody wants to go to lunch at the same time. I really think that if the city's out to collect fees, for whatever reason we've got to collect them, we ought to be available between 8:00 and 5:00, and we're open to collect our own money. And we don't inconvenience the citizen to have to come back at a later date, only to find that they're closed early in the afternoon. So I would like for the city manager to report back to the council on a plan on what they can do to keep it where we have a cashier at our window, right around this corner from the chamber here. So when people come in and pay their fines, that there's a window open to take the money. I don't think that's asking too much. So if they could come up with some ideas, and maybe get back with us, and let us know. That's all I got.
Thank you. Councilman Perkins?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Councilmember Huff?
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember DeLucy?
Hi. I'm concerned about 12 dogs in a yard, and I understand we're looking at it, working with it, but we also no longer have... Or do we have health department workers to go out and say, "Okay, you are over the limit, 10 of these dogs have to go while you're applying for this business license or this rezoning." I don't think this woman should wait four months to have a decent place to live.
Appreciate that comment, council member. I'm not familiar with the specifics of this case, but we will certainly look into it and get back. Our animal control staff that were previously in the health department, that division is still fully staffed as it was before. They've been relocated under the police department. I believe I saw Chi Paulsy go over and talk to the citizen who spoke earlier, so we will definitely get to the bottom of that case and get it resolved.
Yeah, I just... I just don't want four or five months to go on, because I know how long rezonings take. Thank you so much.
Councilman Ben Camp?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Over the past few weeks, I've heard a lot of feedback from the constituents regarding our flag post at City Hall. In discussing this issue with the city manager, I have found that only one policy we have governing these flag posts is raising our flags to half-staff in accordance with the United States Flag Code. I'm not taking a position on this matter tonight, as to what flags should or should not be flown. I don't think that's our place. I am, however, asking the council to support me in directing the city manager to review our flag policies and put some better guidelines in place. Absent clear guidelines, we are subject to criticism and arbitrary decision-making. So if you could do that, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Can I add something? Okay, very good. Thank you. Anything else? No. Okay, thank you. Just wanted to remind everyone that our Independence Day celebration will take place on July the 3rd. Our fireworks display will be at 8:00 PM. Is that correct? 8:00 PM?
Event starts at 7:00.
Oh. Well, I don't know what I'm talking about. What?
The event starts at 7:00.
Yes.
Fireworks start at 9:30.
Oh, fireworks start at 9:30. Event starts at 7:00, fireworks at 9:30. It takes place at the Mormon visitor's center, so you can watch it from the Community of Christ campus, and really anywhere up near our downtown square. I would like to say we do this on July 3rd, so that people also can enjoy a celebration on July 4th if they'd like, but if you have small children who need to go to bed before 9:30, then it's kind of nice to do it on the 3rd, so you don't have... You don't have cranky children on a day that's not a holiday. So that's why we do it on the 3rd rather than the 4th. We receive dozens of complaints every year from citizens in our community about fireworks being set off in neighborhoods and outside of the guidelines of our city about when you can do small fireworks. Please check and see what is permitted in the city, and please, please, please be thoughtful of your neighbors. We have many veterans who are disturbed by loud noises. We have many pets who are disturbed by loud noises. We all understand that people want to celebrate Independence Day in Independence, Missouri, but please be respectful of your neighbors who are sensitive to those loud noises, and certainly to families who... Or, you know, neighbors who need to get some rest over the next couple of days. I also just wanted to acknowledge the Island Festival that took place on the square this weekend, our Polynesian Festival. I happened to be able to go by on Saturday evening. It was a wonderful event. We do have a very diverse and inclusive community, and it's very nice to see these celebrations going on. We will be meeting shortly to talk more about our upcoming Heritage Festival, so it's very nice to see all of these cultures being celebrated in our community, and they were having a wonderful time. Anything else tonight, the city manager?
Just one item, Mayor. Yesterday was the first day of our new fiscal year, so marks the culmination of the end of a very extensive budget process, and just wanted to mention to you, I know over the last couple of weeks, at the two meetings where budget items were considered, there was a lot of good discussion around the potential for operating efficiencies at Independence Power and Light, and we are not waiting for the next budget cycle to look at those issues. The staff is beginning to work on that. City Manager Walker and Director of Public Utilities, Mark Randle, are working very closely with the team at IPL to evaluate the ideas that came up over the last couple of meetings, and see if there are other areas where we can make improvements there to save the rate payers. So we will be looking at those, and bringing any recommendations for action back to the council as appropriate.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else, city? Anyway, we're adjourned.